Sorry, the volume is always louder than I just say.
6:00 PM, okay. Thank you. Okay, being 6:00 PM, I'll call to order the April 28th meeting of the planning board here at Wickham Hall. And I'll begin with the roll call. Scott Self, I'm here. Michael York.
Yeah.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Michael Day, not yet, but hopefully. Brandon Self will not be here. Richard Lane.
Here.
Bill Hutt Welker will not be here. Steve Malone, alternate, is not here. And Lilly Gallagher, alternate, will not be here as well. We do just have a quorum to begin the meeting, but we will not have a quorum. When your application comes up, if you don't get the other member here, because our member here, Jane, has to step down from that, so. To begin with, we'll go to things that we can do, and hopefully, in the meantime, our other member will come in. So I'll read the agenda. We have an application, and this is a. Okay, I will wait for a moment and let the record show that Michael Day has entered, and we will have a quorum. We were hoping you would. We wouldn't have had a quorum without you being. You are here. And so. Here. Okay, first on the agenda, applications and public hearings. This is a public hearing continued from our last meeting. And it's a John Flatley Company request a site plan review for a 208-unit multi-family residence development at and 5,000 square foot light industrial flex space building on the property at 244 Old Homestead Highway. And that is shown at Tax Map 19 Lot 98. Subject property is located in the Industrial Park District. Discussions and other business, Christopher and Ann Hamilton regarding the building on a Class 6 recommendation. Michael and Jen LaRoche, voluntary lot merger and site plan review regulations. We're going to review some of those and any other business as may be required. Is anybody here for the Ann Hamilton and the Christopher and Ann Hamilton? I don't see anybody other than I know who was here for that. So that agenda item is going to be tabled until our next meeting, for now anyways. Because the ZBA erred and they approved it when they shouldn't have approved it. They have five criteria. The ZBA, when they go through something, and one of the criteria was a no, and the rest of them was a yes. And they approved it anyway, so they're going to have to reconsider that, call for a special meeting. If it's on their next meeting, we still probably won't be able to hear it at our next meeting because of the 30-day appeal period, but we're going to table until our next meeting, so we see what they're going to do. So. That's what happened to that one. So, that being out of the way, I will continue the public hearing of the Flatley Company, and you guys are up, and does anyone, any of the board members have questions from the last time that had to do with all the residential part of it? Because that's what we looked at the last time. If not, we're going to have him continue and go to the clubhouse and the industrial part of it. So, if no one has any questions on the residential park, would you just continue with the clubhouse and industrial park?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brandon, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. With me tonight is Kevin Walker from the John Flatley Company and Jason Plord from VHB, who is our traffic engineer. We're here tonight to continue the discussion with the mixed-use development that we were before you last with, and I guess just to kind of walk right into the clubhouse details. The submitted elevation views of the clubhouse with our submission package. We did touch on some of the details of the clubhouse, primarily internal details at the last meeting. But these elevation views are typical clubhouse buildings that the John Flatley Company has done on a number of their sites. We also shared at the last meeting some actual photos of the clubhouse, so this is the same clubhouse building here, these bottom two that we're proposing. A lot of architectural elements. And then this is actually the same clubhouse there on the top left-hand picture. The clubhouse site will be, you know, ADA accessible. It'll have interior spaces, and then that'll open up the internal access to a pool area, and we talked about some picnic areas and barbecue stations, rather, that will be around that facility as well. We have designed on the site, and we really kind of went over all the site plan elements, but just to remind everybody, the clubhouse is the first building that you get to on the right-hand side after you pass the industrial, the 5,000 square foot industrial space. So you can see it's positioned here on the north side of the parking area that's proposed. We have ADA access that comes in, and it's really a nice-looking building from all angles, got a good balance of windows. And then quite a few, you know, architectural elements, roofline changes, and entrance kind of a vestibule entrance type design, and yeah, so that's the clubhouse. I've been happy to answer any questions. I mean, Kevin might be able to help with some of that if there's design or material-related questions associated with that building. The elevation views that we did send or the plans does detail all those elements, you know, the variation of materials, stuff like that. So we certainly believe that that's consistent with, you know, any local requirements. Want me to continue, Mr. Chairman?
Let's just see if there are any questions on the clubhouse. I know it's pretty straightforward. We saw some of it last time, but anybody have any questions on that? Then, yeah, you can go to the industrial part of it.
Sure, so the industrial building is a. I guess I was. We submitted. So. So this is kind of an example rendering of the industrial building, and what I mean by that is this is the architectural element that the John Flatley Company has done on a number of other sites. You have, this would be the front facade. On this particular building, it's 50 by 100, so you might have four doors, so there's kind of one extra unit here. We didn't want to, my client didn't want to go ahead and have the building redesigned until, you know, we're hopefully successful on securing the approval this evening. But, so you'll have basically four 25 by 50-foot areas. It's a flex building, so if the company comes in and they want two of those or three of those, certainly they can be rented in that fashion. But this is the, the section that would face the highway, Old Homestead Highway. You can see you have kind of storefront or a man door. There's a lot of glass. It's a nice-looking building, and then there's kind of a metal facade on the top and then a horizontal layout. It's called timber tech boards that go around the entry door areas on the front side. And then on the back, you would have just your standard man doors and overhead doors, and we talked about, you know, the reason for the layout and the orientation at the last meeting, and kind of a site plan detail, if you will. But, but it's going to be, you know, a modern building. Definitely will have an industrial look. I think it'll fit in really well on that corridor. What the elevation view here doesn't show is kind of the depth to the building. There'll be obviously the parking on the front side. You know, the walkway is in front of the building, and then we have, you know, some street trees proposed in the landscaped area between the highway and that building. That's articulated a little bit better on the plans that we went over at the last meeting. So again, this is a 5,000 square foot building. Maximum would be probably four units. And then depending on the, you know, potential user, there are no users lined up yet for this particular building. But the, the John Flatley Company has been quite successful in, you know, finding good businesses to occupy these spaces on many of their other projects. They do have their own leasing department in-house, so they certainly, you know, only rent to tenants that, that's you know, going to fit in with the residential setting and kind of that mixed-use component. So it'll definitely be, you know, a light user, if I had to guess. Similar to probably any of the users on the other side of the road in that kind of industrial professional building setting. So those are the two buildings. I think the details that we had left to go over, I did want to touch on a couple of things from the last meeting. I think when we closed the last meeting, there was, you know, really one outstanding item that, that we had some homework to do. It was related to the topic of Safford Drive and the conditions of Safford Drive, and there was a recommended contribution in one of the staff or department head memos, and my client did have a chance to, you know, look into that, and they are willing to contribute up to $30,000 towards the improvements of Safford Drive, which would be consistent with what that request is, so. You know, that's certainly something that, you know, was, was discussed. I, I think after the meeting, there was some conversation. But, so, so, you know, that's, that's good. The other item had to do with just providing some turning templates for the fire department internally to show that, you know, their apparatus would be able to get around the site and maneuver on the site, and we did supply that to the fire department. It's my understanding that, that they were fine with that template, but I, I haven't gotten anything formal in writing. It's just my understanding from conversation, so. So I think we've addressed all the questions from the last meeting with, with those two being the primary, you know, outstanding issues. We, we ran out of time really at the last meeting. It was a long presentation, so the board had a lot of really good questions. We're hoping to answer any questions that you may have this evening. Timing is very critical for this project, so we would ask that hopefully the board can consider conditional approval tonight. We still do have a fair amount of state permits to secure with this project, but that'll allow, you know, my clients to kind of proceed with the, you know, the purchasing of the property and those details, and allow us to focus on, on securing those state permits. So with that, unless you have anything you want to add, Kevin? Happy to answer any questions.
So do you have a floor plan layout? That you could just put up for us here?
Might be a question for the board, but what is the, what is the zoning for businesses in this area? Like what? Is?
According to zoning. We refer to her book here, page three, article 10. Businesses are precluded being in industrial park. Now, if we, if we've changed the ver- granted a variance zoning board, to my knowledge, we're feeling is that that doesn't change the fact that they can put in a business within the industrial park.
I don't follow either of you guys.
So the use that we're proposing is permitted use in this district, this flex industrial space.
Not according to
I believe it is, because industrial park doesn't allow commercial businesses. This would not be a commercial business. There would not be, you know, store, there would not be retail space in the front of this. There would be an office space, a bathroom, and then a warehousing space, and that's definitely permitted in this district.
So then the intent of the district small business and office operations, unless they had grouped together in the same building, and they also are direct associated to the primary use, which would be your apartment complex. I don't know if that's where.
Yeah, that's, yeah, because for those that are new here, so.
It would be the use of the building, not necessarily the building itself, we're talking about, but it would be the use.
Would be the use.
And they don't have that established yet, what's going to be in there.
But it says it's precluded for them to put a business in. Unless it is actually associated with the apartment complex. If you put in your rental office down there, then you'd be within the rights of the building or the use of the building, because that would be part of your overall business.
It's still.
I'm not following.
Get your reasoning there. You're, you're, I think you're saying that the business has to be accessory to the primary use, and you're saying the primary use is apartments.
Correct.
Is that how you're saying, is that what you're saying? Yep.
So, that's what the variance was saying, which is that leads into a lot of other things, but I don't know if they're just yet.
You have more to discuss on that? You want to let him finish? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And then we'll. Okay. What are we solving right now? What are you looking for, Mr. Brandon?
Use of that building.
Oh, what it's going to be?
What it, what it can be used for.
What section of the ordinance are you?
Connectage three of the zoning ordinance.
Right, that just talks about the intent of a district. It doesn't actually talk about any of the approved uses within that district. So that is, all that section is doing is giving a summary overview of of the goals and objectives of your district, but it's not defining any, you know, it's not limiting uses. That's my understanding.
When it says precluded, that's the definition.
But Mr. Brandon is correct in that, because for uses, we need to go into the industrial park district back a ways in the, in the book to find out what actually is allowed in that district there.
We need to find it pretty much the same.
That's what we need to do. So we're under permitted uses in the industrial park district.
The commercial industrial.
And it is.
Regulations. Page 80.
I'm on page 38. But we can't use the master plan to delegate zoning. We use the master plan to help us when we set up zoning that's voted by the town, but it's not a binding document. It's a guideline.
Yeah, it's what, it's the basis for your regulations.
But when the, when the statement, the district, district excludes service operations and retail activity unless associated with a primary use.
Okay.
It's the second time it's mentioned.
But you have to go into the ordinance. I mean, the ordinance is what defines what uses are allowed and not allowed, not the master plan.
And on page 38, number two, permitted uses, that's what can be, that's what can go in there.
It's commercial industrial district, correct?
That is right. Yeah, you don't have our.
It's the industrial park district.
Yeah. Ours is page 37.
Because they did actually put a childcare center for their apartment complex that they wanted. Then, then it's associated with the apartment children complex. That's an associated business. Well, to be a separate business, they may not be affecting most people. But all these, the all these here, they, they build that building, and they're small, and they can use all this stuff.
The reason that was put in there was to prevent just smaller businesses setting up in the industrial park like we have in the business district is what that was for, as I recall, if you would pass that.
Some reason, all I have in this one is the commercial industrial district.
But did you want to see a copy of that, what are you looking for?
If you don't mind.
Because you can just take a look at the copy of mine, but. But it would be my interpretation or understanding that the permitted uses are permitted uses, you know, regardless. So if that building there is a certain size or whatever it happens to be, as long as the, and I think there's a size, there's a length, but anyway, get out of that way. The longer, as long as the use that's going on inside the building is permitted in the industrial park district, it can be in there.
Yeah, I mean, and so just for clarification, we're proposing a building. Right, when we come in and, and apply for a building permit or a certificate of occupancy for a specific use, then typically, it's my understanding that staff would review that use to make sure it's a compliant use before they issue a certificate of occupancy. If they believe it's a non-compliant use, then that would be a time where you would have to address.
Actually, you'd have to come before the board. Yeah, staff can say whether it would fit in there or not, but unless it was approved as like a multi-tenant, you have to come in before the board for whatever uses go in there.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that.
Another, but it's just so that the, the residents in the area, everyone can have a chance to take a look at a public hearing.
But certainly in here, it doesn't restrict. I mean, it could be manufacturing, production, fabrication, processing, packaging.
Yeah.
I mean, any of those uses
Yeah.
are allowed, and certainly that building could, 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 you know, be, be a potential for that, even a small research and development, a publishing company, warehousing, wholesaling, all of those are uses that could happen, and, you know, we would, we would suggest that, you know, those are the tenants that we would be seeking at this point. Unless, you know, somebody showed an interest that wasn't a conforming use, and at that point, we would have to go through a different, you know, a different approval process. So in, if I'm not aware of any size restrictions in the, the ordinance, but I do understand what the.
Mr. Brandon would just line that.
Yeah. Maybe there.
What we, what we secured at the zoning board was simply allowing a rest use. That doesn't mean that other uses on the property, and I would like to state, you know, for the record, that we presented the same plan essentially that we are presenting to the planning board, to the zoning board. That plan, you know, we have a lot more detail on here, but we had the 5,000 square foot, you know, industrial space building, and then we had the residential, so there was never, never with all of our meetings with, you know, staff, with, with any of the boards, has there ever been any inference that there's some kind of an issue size-wise and that this proposal is disproportionate? So I, and I, I haven't found anything in the zoning that, that implies that that is the case.
And yeah, I'm in agreement with that. No, again, like we said before, whatever goes in there, you just come back for the planning board to have the planning board have a public hearing on it. Whether it's, you know, the building maybe, what, maybe five businesses, you said, might be in there?
Yeah, the four, I think.
Four or five, but each one of them would have to come in unless they're all going in at the same time. But for now, it has nothing really to do with this hearing right here, because it's just a building. It has to do with this hearing.
Correct.
So we can just continue, I would think. Are you all set with that, or you aren't? Yeah, continue. We can still discuss that at length, you know, the zoning.
Building is fine.
Yeah.
It's, it's used.
Yeah, they'll come back and forth. And they'll be here. So are there any floor drains in that building? That's what I wanted to see the floor plans for.
We are not proposing any floor drains.
Yes, that's a good thing here.
Yeah, if we did, then we would have to tie into the municipal sewer after going through an oil water quality tank.
Yeah, we have to pump it off one of them.
And we're not proposing any of that.
And is that sprinkled that building?
I don't believe it'll have to be, but that's going to be part of the building permit, and it could be a function of the use. I mean, so depending on, you know, what the use is and, you know, what's being stored, the fire department could say ultimately that, that it, that it might be. I suspect in the way the Flatley Company normally does this is they'll put the infrastructure in, you know, up to the building, just in case that ever is a need. But if it's not needed, they, they very well may not put this.
And would you just repeat the, the amount of parking spaces around that building? I know you went over it last meeting, but just for this meeting, since we're talking about that building.
Sure. With this building, we have 12 parking spaces along the front, and then we have, you know, certainly parking along the bay doors in the back. So each unit would have at least two or two to three parking spaces along their, their, the deck and then along the front as well. Again, it's not, it's not a retail use. Retail use isn't permitted, so the parking has been sized to, to follow your regulations, which is essentially to follow a permitted use matrix, so.
Just the back part of that going to be. Steven up or.
It's not, it'll just be blocks. Yeah, it's blocks. Yeah. Yeah, they, and it's actually designed that way on purpose. I mean, we don't have a lot of room to accommodate that. But, but this being a main entrance to, you know, residential development, they don't want any, you know, issues with, you know, tractor-trailer, delivery trucks, stuff like that.
Okay. Yeah, I think. Is that the end of your presentation?
It is.
So any questions from board members, or is there anyone online? No questions online at all. But we had a pretty good presentation for the residential use part of it there, and actually, you're not seated, but you're not seated on the board, okay, so. And the rest of it was pretty straightforward for the, as far as the business use there.
You guys are still going to put in the school bus, so that we have talked about.
And we, yeah, at least we are. Yeah, we'll speak for the school department, and I need to back up a little. A little slower today. I spoke to the school department, and they asked us to put a stop.
Yeah, it'd be clearly up to that.
Yeah, they, they do want one, and it's going to be, it's going to be right, it's either going to be on this side or on this side, but they want it.
Yeah, that's probably safer.
Yeah, so we are, we're absolutely on board to do that. Thank you. That was, that was an outstanding item that we, I didn't address.
And you have spoken with the road agent on Safford Drive. That's what Mr. Brandon was talking about.
Yes, yeah, he actually called, I guess he was on vacation, and he called me a few days later. We talked about we're all up for the 30 brands.
Yeah.
I don't know when and where you want it.
They will, I'm sure they'll let you know. When or what. I just had one question from the last time, you know, with the residential units there. You have the, the parking garages there. And I'm curious, they're, they're about, I think, three stalls longer than 10 spaces would take. I'm just wondering why that was. I'm just curious about that.
One of them has, one of them's ADA compliant.
Okay, so you have wider stalls in the parking garages than you do for the regular parking.
Absolutely, because there's, there's some additional room for some storage if somebody, you know, rents, but also one of them has to be ADA compliant, so it's, it's a wider, wider stall, and that's the center. It's the center unit.
Yeah, that's, I was wondering why they're wider than what would take up 10 normal parking spaces. And you also have, I think it's note five on, it might even be on, be mostly, it might even be on that one right there. I'm not sure, but it has to do with a what is it, a I think it's a wellhead, or is it a aquifer protection zone and that stuff in there?
It's not applicable here.
We don't have one, so if you would just cross that out with your regular plans there.
I thought we actually took that off.
Maybe you did. I saw it on the plans that were over at Town Hall, but I don't know about those. So let's see, the permits you'll have to get are, you're still, you're going to have to get the FAA permit, correct? And you need a driveway permit from Route 32. And also driveway permit for Safford Drive. Sewer discharge permit, you're still working on that. And, oh, and there's a wetlands permit too, for crossing over the wetlands there.
Correct.
And there's an alteration of terrain permit. We're talking about that one there. And I think that was it for permits.
That's correct.
Anybody else that? Okay, those are the permits there. So any approval would be conditional upon receiving those permits, obviously.
Mr. Chairman, would you just please list those again so?
Yeah. Let me listen again. The FAA permit from the FAA. And okay, so a driveway permit from Route 32, which would be from the state of New Hampshire and. A permit from the town for Stafford Drive, a driveway permit.
Okay.
And a sewer discharge permit. And that would be sewer discharge permit, and that would be from the Department, Department of Environmental Services. Concord and wetlands permit because they're crossing a part of the wetlands there. And alteration of terrain permit.
The only one I was missing was the sewer district.
Okay, yeah, that's the sewer department in town has to sign off on it, but I'm not so certain. For it, but the.
Now, would we want to add the cut permit for the town?
That's in there. Yeah. Oh, a tree cut or.
Tree cut.
Tree cutting permit. Is there one that they have to get? Are you cutting it?
They will have to, because he told me the last time you will cut quite a tree. Yeah, can't to cut.
It's, that's where he water.
Yeah.
It's not a normal permit that we would list as conditions, but it's.
And I think you mentioned that the drawing you had there of the industrial building. Was not, not the same size as the one you're putting in or plan to put in, right? Didn't you say that the drawing?
It's wider, but it's the same exact architectural elements.
But the one you're putting in is wider? Or the one you showed is wider?
Showing us, showing you.
It's wider. Okay, so another condition. If you get approval tonight would be that you bring in a set of plans that show that. Exact what you're putting in there and that the plan, that'll have to be like a compliance hearing or something that the planning board can see that.
We would be fine with that.
Okay. Let me just check my notes. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
The 200 conditions I want to put into the record is agreeing with a public works director on Stafford Drive.
Public Works Director, that's right, yeah.
And school bus.
Is that shown, that school bus shop shown on your?
He just showed.
You pointed where it was gonna go, but it's shown on.
We haven't revised the plan to, you know, to show that, because we just. Mr. Walker was communicating with the, you know, the school or the school, the bus company rather, about that location, but we're happy to add it to the plans.
Yeah, and and that could be brought in the same time that lies hearing, the same time it came in with the other plans. So, let's see. That's school bus stop beyond. And the retaining walls are gonna be looked over by an engineer. I think you said that at your last meeting.
Yeah, typically, we've handled that on other projects in town and everywhere really is that. Those, the final stamped retaining wall designs would would be submitted as a condition of approval.
Okay. There are just a few other items here. Paper straight for you in a minute. And these are staff concerns, and I'm sure you saw them anyway, but. The staff comments on it were. Barriers around the pool area and adjacent to retaining walls should be indicated height and height on the plans. Do you have a copy of the staff comments?
Yes, and we, I believe we actually revised the plans to incorporate that, but we're happy with those still being conditions just to. You know, to make sure maybe staff has had a chance.
And that. Do you revise the plans yet or you haven't revised?
We may not have submitted on it, but we did revise. I mean, I could show the board now, but we're happy to have that as.
And also indicate curb height of all retaining walls on plan.
Yeah.
That'll be on there. Okay, indicates no storage area.
Yep, we did that.
Okay, indicate the percentage of parking area that would be landscaped.
We got a waiver for that.
We got that.
Yeah.
Let's see. And another one was consider incorporating more of the recommended planning from selection of trees, you know, that are in the. The site plan would be regs, but again. I don't really have a a problem with what you guys are planning there. I don't know, but anybody else does. So I don't know that.
And we talked, I mean, we talked about if any changes are made, then it would be native materials that are listed in the, in the.
So I'm just not going with that. Number five, sewer manholes need needed at each building connection. I think that was already on there, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. And clarify gas utility to location. You said no gas is coming into the system. I'm into the.
Correct. We're looking at heat pump units at this.
Yeah. Okay, that was it for the staff comments. Anything else from the board? And there's no one here from the public that wants to speak to. Are you, you aren't here for this, right?
Yeah, I'm here for.
Okay, we, no comment on it. Okay. So anybody online? Comments, because if not, I'll close the public hearing and the board can deliberate and we can come up with a decision. Okay, hearing no comments, then I will close the public hearing. All right. Let's say you, the board.
Guys, any more questions?
Well, this, we can discuss what you had, you know, as far as.
Procedural things. And getting this more probably for our future. And when actually involving, well, it does involve this, but for future. This park was created or district was created with the express. Interest, public interest is an industrial park. And going into it, everybody knew pretty much what the what the land situation was in there. And. The applicant has asked for a variance. To build the apartment complex within the industrial park. This is contrary to the public interest. That was created. And in the ZBA, this actual. Stated her position that was contrary to public interest. And I think it's my own, also, I really pretty much agree in that. My point is that it was created. And it is was accepted as part of, you know, by the town. But this was going to be specific use for industrial development. Where. We have the, the language hasn't changed. But we have effectively changed what the park was zoned for. Through a variance. To me. Something of this nature. When we're, when we're taking something out of, out of the zone and changing its own, which we did. Back in December, January, put it on the town war, some march. When we went down the Route 12 corner. Something like this should have. Been put up as a referendum through the, come through the planning board. Discussion, butters discussion. And then presented to the town because the town is the one that created this to start with. And I have had an opinion given to me that. What you're doing is you're presenting a referendum on not on the development, I mean, not on the zone, but on the development. But my point, my. Point here is we present referendums. All the time, being one against the other without really. Much thought or any fear of something bad going, coming around or happening. Going into a. The court case, you know, I. The kind of caught this this morning on Glenn versus Chichester. The Supreme Court held that. The zoning board had. Made a mistake in granting or forcing Glenn to abide by. The zoning change that happened after an application. So it was not in the public interest to force that person to abide by the new ordinance. This is kind of in reverse what we're doing, there's a scene here as to what what the court decided. But my whole, my whole. Plot plan is that we had ample or there was ample time. From the original application to go through a process. Of presenting it to the planning board and it's on me for not reading the zoning board's minutes back in November. And raising this question then. Or trying to get some direction as to how we can, should or could handle this.
And but but you're saying that it should have gone before the town and have a change in zone if that was, is that what was going in there? So that.
Know what the variance, I know what a variance is.
Yeah.
But I still, I still think this is bigger deal. And where it was an original concept district, that that should have happened.
Well, generally, when something's done like that, it's considered spot zoning, which is not. Not really wanted to, nobody really wants to do that spot zoning, his own here, there, there and everywhere. You have to have a whole total zone for. You know, whatever uses are in that area there. And it, the planning board probably, well, I don't know if they would have presented it out to the town, but that's probably how that would have been looked at. And again, like you just mentioned, the variances, that is what they're for. It's their advantage is there for. If there's a large piece of land zoned or whatever hap- happened to the ordinance, have to say. That you can get relief from it, property or you can get relief from that through a variance. And none of that has has anything to do with what we're discussing here tonight, really, you know. I know you brought it up and I'm glad to listen to your points on it and it's, it's good conversation, you know, we should talk about that planning board. Sessions, but we can't consider any of that tonight because the zoning board adjustment has full authority to do what they did. And to to not rezone, which is, you know, you're looking at it as a rezoning, but it really isn't. I don't, in my opinion, it really isn't, but. Again, I guess to get back on point. We can discuss that maybe later on in the meeting or something like that. For now, but just let's get back to the application and. It's, the CBA has given a variance for this to go through. So now the planning board's job is to take a look at it to see. If it abides by all of the rules and regulations in our zoning. And if it meets any other criteria. Of course, concerns that board members or the public might have about it. So that's pretty much what we're here to do tonight. So. That being said, anything else about the plat? Does anybody have, do you have anything about the plat particular pertaining to, you know?
No, as far as the project itself, it's, we, it's fine, then all the criteria seem to be met. For that particular thing, you know, as I say, what my, my. BP will.
Is that it's.
Procedural.
Yeah, is that is going in, the housing is going into industrial park, was supposed to be industrial park there. And yeah, I get it for sure, but the, you know, the. They've had trouble getting anybody in that piece of land over there. So at least something's going in there. But back to our, back to our plat here and deliberating on it. Let me read back conditions for us here now. Conditions, if if it's approved, any motion would have a condition. That. They would have an intent to cut, and I guess that's a.
Yeah, that's the correct.
Permit, intent to cut, they'd have an, have to have an FAA permit. They would have to have a driveway permit from the state on 32 and a driveway permit from the town of Swansea on Stafford Drive. A sewer discharge permit from the DES, a wetlands permit from the DES and an alteration of terrain permit. And also. Another condition would be that they need to submit the drawings of the actual building that they're putting on that industrial part there. And also. I I guess some sort of an agreement worked out with the public works department on Stafford Drive. And also location of the school bus stop on the plat. Those are all conditions. And. Let me see, barriers around the pool area and adjacent to retaining walls, they should be indicated. That would be a condition. It is barriers around the pool area and adjacent to retaining walls should be indicated type and height on the plans.
At a certain height?
The type and the type and the height of them, type and the height on the plans. And indicate curb height of all retaining walls on the plan. Indicate snow storage area again on the plan. Let's see, and sewer manholes, sewer manholes need to be at each building. I think that's already on the plan, but sewer manholes need to be. Shown on the plan for each building connection. And yeah, that would be it for the conditions. Now, all of those conditions are.
I don't think I get the last one. What was the last one?
Let's see, the last one was sewer manholes needed to be located or shown at each building where the sewer connection. Connection is going to be at each building. So a manhole has to be shown there. I think it might be on there. I might have seen that on the plat, but we'll just put it on there anyway. Because all these conditions are administrative conditions. Which means, as we're discussing, our conditions approval, conditional approval and approval with conditions. This is a conditional approval, meaning that once all of those are met, since they're administrative, it would, the final. Actually not, because one of them, you have to come back for a compliance hearing. The condition about the drawings of the building, you need to be back here for compliance hearing. And showing whether the bus stop is for compliance. But all the rest of them are administrative. So anyway, we've been discussing that administrative part of it there, and which means that once those are met, those conditions there, like the permits and those things right there, they don't have to come back. To show us that they're meant, that they have them and the approval is final once the last one is met. So that being said. That would be if a motion was to be approved or motion for approval, motion for approval, it would have all those conditions in it.
Let me read that too.
Yeah, read the conditions back. Yep.
Credits to be obtained, driveway permit for Route 32, FAA permit, Stafford Drive permit. Wetlands permit, AOT permit, sewer district sign off. Intent to cut permit, provide a set of plans for the building to be built. Agreement with the public works director for Stafford Drive and the plan for the school bus stop. Submission of drawings, oh, that's a, that's a, sorry, submission of drawings for actual flex building to be built is a, is a repeat, I'll take that out. Barriers around and adjacent to the pool area, indicate type and height. And indicate height of retaining wall, sewer connections to be shown for each building. Am I guessing anything?
So let's see, the barriers around the pool and adjacent retaining walls should be indicated type and height on the plans. Yep, okay. I don't think that that meant the height of the retaining wall or did it?
Oh.
I think it was just the barriers. And also, did you have the sewer discharge permit from the DES?
Sewer discharge, no, I didn't have that.
Okay.
It was, it was in there, but it was stated differently.
Oh, would you read them back again? Because. Yeah, once you're done there, read them again. And if it's in there twice, that's fine. It's in there twice. I know what it is.
Just one second. Driveway permit from Route 32 from the state, FAA permit, Stafford Drive permit, wetlands permit. AOT permit, that's alteration of terrain, sewer district sign off. Intent to cut permit, agreement with the public works director for Stafford Drive and the plan for the school bus stop. Submission of drawings for actual flex building to be built, barriers around and adjacent to the pool, indicating type and height. Is that correct?
Mm hmm.
Okay, indicate height of retaining wall. Sewer connection to be shown for each building, sewage discharge from the, sewage discharge permit from the ES.
And indicate snow storage area on the plans too, unless they indicating the snow storage area on the plans. Maybe on there, but just put it on there anyway.
Yes, I have, I added that.
Okay. I think that covers them all. Anybody? Anybody? Nope. Anybody? Nope. Then if we got all, all of the. It's on here and I'm pretty sure that we do. So yeah, a motion would be in order. We've covered all of that. Okay, a mo- motion by Michael War- Michael York to.
Approve.
Approve the site plan with the conditions that were just stated.
So this will be a condition or proof.
It will be, yes. And.
That's what.
So we have a motion is in that we have a second by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor by saying aye, aye, all those opposed. So. You have your approval. With the conditions and you'll have to come back to us to show us the. The drawings of the actual building, industrial building and where the. School bus stop is located on the plans and anything else that is missing from the plans. That is, are in those conditions. The rest of them, you don't need to come back because they're permits.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. You know, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Good luck.
Question for us, I'm the chairman of the zoning board in a different town, so we meet over there as well.
Oh, well, thank you. It was all by mistake, but. Oh, Jane is resuming her seat at the table. So we have a. A voluntary lot merger, which we don't really have a, we usually discuss them in the planning board and then the chairman usually signs it, oh, we're missing Michael York. Oh, he's cooking for us, okay. And we'll have the site plan review regulations. We can do some discussion on that and we can continue discussion on, on what you're talking about. Because we should discuss all this. It's, it's good stuff to discuss for the planning board, just to know. How zoning board works and what they do, what we do and what shouldn't, shouldn't be done. It's all good topics of conversation. So we have a voluntary merger. And we can have any drawing to that? Just to pass around if we do.
Right side then.
Because it. Okay, so let's just see.
I mean.
It looks pretty, pretty common.
More highlighting will be coming on.
Yeah, and everybody, see, that was in our packet, you know, just.
There's a building on one and nothing on the other.
Correct.
And they're gonna eliminate that center line by the looks of it, I would say. Oh, it's, it all, it all looks okay, then we need a motion. Yes, yeah.
Isn't this the same property that was just subdivided a couple of years ago?
No.
I don't know, no, it wasn't, no. Okay.
There was a law I wrote with the. Where the candidates, that's not the same property?
No, but there was an independent campaign. Yeah, but no, it was just demonstrated for a while.
Same property, okay.
Yeah, effectively, effectively, effectively the gentleman wanted to. He wanted to build a barn. But he, where he wanted it was on the lot that didn't have the house, meaning it would be an accessory structure, it wasn't accessory anything. Even though the house is next door. So we talked about all the different options there were, one of them was merge them.
Okay, then, sounds easy enough. So if no one has any objections, we need a motion authorizing the chairman to sign the voluntary lot merger. So, motion by Richard Lane allowing the chairman to sign the lot merger. Seconded by Michael Day. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, okay, by saying yes, I mean, I, I. Okay, then.
Mr. Chairman, deciding the, what is the document called? The lot merger?
It's a, it's a lot merger, yes, it's a, it's a notice of voluntary merger.
Oh, no, this, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
See, four twenty-eight, I think, yeah. And that business is taken care of and the, we had already tabled the Christopher and, and Hamilton class six recommendation, so. There's a lot merger, so we have site plan review regulations. Anything else we want to discuss tonight? So. Richard, you want to continue on, on what we're talking about? I, I know what you're saying. You're saying is that. If it's gonna be used for residential and it's in an industrial park like that one up there, then it should have gone through town approval, a town meeting rather than having the ZVA. Give a, a variance on it. Basically, you're not, you're not saying that they shouldn't have it at all because they're using up our industrial land? Or is that part of what you're saying?
No. I guess what, what I'm looking at is there are five people on the zoning board, okay? And they, you know, they're elected official. But they are making a decision that involves something that the town itself created. And. My feeling is something of, of that nature. Uh, where, where the zoning board, zoning board is approving a variance to an established intent. But that should come through, once they've done what they're going to do, should come through the planning board. The planning board should create it as a change in, in zone or whatever, however we want to do it. I'm, I'm, you know, I don't know exactly, but something we should discuss, how we would handle.
But it can't though, if, unless the RSA specifically state that it can be done that way, it cannot be done that way. You know what I mean? The zoning board of adjustment cannot, um, you know, have their meeting, have their hearing on it and get everything together and then have the. Right by the planning board and have them approve it because the state does not give us authority to do that. You know, we aren't home rule, anything that's stated in, in there that we can do, we can do it, but if it's not in there, we can't do it. So, and they set up there specifically that way, so there wouldn't be too much power on one board.
The. This is a little bit of a tangent, but historically. If you're granting a zoning or variance. Normally that is within the existing property. And what, looking back. The variances are given to, well, okay, you can be. Instead of fifty feet, you can be twenty feet from the line. Or you can, your driveway could be moved this way or that way. Or narrower or whatever because of certain outside. Problems, so maybe a driveway is sitting between two ledges. You know, and it's not seven, or not fifty feet wide, it's only thirty feet wide.
Well, the, the way they've, the way they've set it up or the way the, the state has set it up. And granting the powers to the ZVA is that the ZVA has. All the power to interpret anything in our zoning ordinance, whether it be. Lot setback or driveway location or even what can be in a particular zone in there. Everything that covers zoning, those guys have the authority to either issue a variance or a special exception and, yes, Mike, you have some.
I mean, this is pretty important, people. Decide the three hundred million.
Actually, you're right on that one.
And that's effectively what the ZVA is there.
It is, but.
You're the judicial branch, you guys are part of the executive, or the legislative branch, and then the selectmen of the, of the.
Sort of, but the, the townspeople, all, all of us are the legislative branch, the entire town.
Right, but it's just like people voted for things that's unmeeting or stuff, you guys just still like to send it kind of, formulate the ideas with. Public hearings and the rest of the stuff, just to try to like it's something more tangible, that's all.
Are we?
Well, I would say, it, it just in, in Richard's. You know, thoughts on this, be, you know, we, it, the industrial. Zone is like something that is, that we specifically designed to serve a specific function. Rather than, and I guess, I guess every other zone is the same way, whether it's. Residential or rural or something, but, but. It seems like it's, it was a very clear intent on that zone. And then to have that be. But they disregarded, I can see that point.
I, I sit at all the ZVA meetings, taking the notes. The, the general approach that the ZVA takes is relief to. The owners of land in a town, right? I mean, if they are constrained in, in some way by the zoning ordinances. The ZVA has the authority to offer some kind of relief by offering variances and special exceptions. The relief in this case was that that land, it's in a tip zone, a tax and increment financing zone. Was meant to be for businesses, right, for industry to come in. And it turned out that the land is not suitable. For the kind of industry that we're talking about. Once you get onto the land, you see there's a lot of. Rock out proppings and wetlands and all this, which, and they have, I'm sure Dave could attest to this. They had people, real estate agents come in and try to. You know, promote the, this land for industrial use and time and time again, there was insufficient buildable land. Taking into account the wetlands and the rocky out proppings that they could use. And so finally, after, how long has it been? Ten years, twelve years, fifteen years, a long time?
I would say ten.
It's tax and increment.
Yeah.
A tip district is designed so that the town's burden of, of, of the infrastructure of, of building that district. Is alleviated by taxes that come from the industries that move in. And that hasn't happened. So the town is thinking, we've got this land and this infrastructure that we put in, put a lot of money into putting sewer and water, et cetera. And we have no tax income coming in to offset that. Is there a better use of the land? And the owners of that land have a right to seek relief. They've been trying to sell it for. I don't know, fifteen years, whatever it is. So they have a right to seek relief and that's partially what the ZVA does, is look at. The, the rights of the, of the landlord. As proportion to the public interest represented by the citizens of the town. It has to be balanced, right?
It's, it's a one size doesn't fit all type of thing is why the ZVA is there.
Right.
So, go ahead.
I don't like to say anything about this tonight really, but. The same thing happens all the time when we let a residential area go into a business commercial zone. Look at the records, the zoning board has done that with several. Just in the last five years.
There have. Oh, you mean building houses in business, you know?
Variances, yeah.
Variances for that.
That's what variances do.
Right.
They allow the uses to vary. And you have to come in and present your case. And, and have the zoning board either approve it or disapprove it.
I would encourage you to look at the zoning board minutes from the meeting that granted that variance, it was either very thorough. They asked a lot of questions, they, they, they tried to do the best they can, they're only, you know.
I actually said that.
What's that?
I actually said that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an interesting series.
It was probably sixteen years at least ago when they changed it in the state. And they got those five points that they had just, and it makes it seem so, when you're not at the meeting. And hear all the discussion and the presentation and the questions and you read the minutes, if you go straight to. The answers, then you say, gee, why'd they all answer yes on this, you know? But it's, it's not easy to make a decision and just have to answer those points. And I remember driving some people from town over to Concord to meet with some of the senators and reps to talk about that when they were changing it. So, and I still don't like that form.
You don't like that? And I think it serves a purpose. Because it boils down to specific questions that have to be answered, specific things that have to be met before that thing can go through.
That's true.
Have it haphazard, you know.
And go on and on.
Or every morning.
Is it that they give, I know, they won't know on one question and that kills the project?
Yes, yeah.
To that, you're probably this last one you're talking about.
That is correct, yes.
And now things can go to that HAB too.
Yeah, that's, that's scary because of fifteen cases they've had so far that the town has been able to move fifteen times. That's why my.
That's.
And those people don't live in that town and they don't know the history of.
The courts are like that too, though. The courts generally favor. The applicant, you know, a lot of those things, so.
Very good judge in this area that did the airport, that's, you know, he, he said, well, you put too much weight into the community feelings.
But there, there were several people at the ZVA meeting that did make your point as well about that being industrial land over there. And it not, should not be housing.
My thought is, when that was created. People. Had to know what was in there.
Oh, as far as how the topography was, yeah, they probably did.
But did they take any manufacturing people in there that are gonna build a manufacturing plant in there to look at?
Well, when we do the zoning like that, I remember when that was, I think I might have, I was in the boardroom when that was, and when you do it. You don't do it like drawing the district lines for the state of New Hantry, you know, have a big dogling out here and back like that because of land, you just. Put the area in one specific area and they will build on what they can build on and what they can't build on, they won't, but it might still be in itself.
And, and I walked that land because we had this project coming up and my, my old manufacturing land, and I've actually built the factory flats. No way any decent sized plant would be built there, there's, there's no way to do it.
And it sounds like it was a good use of that piece of property then, you know, it's, it's.
Plus we do need.
That's a catch twenty-two.
Well, it is a catch twenty-two.
And we've gone around and around on this.
It is true, you know, and I got yelled at a couple of times at white meetings, because I said, we have to take all these things into concern when we're approving housing. And I get dirty looks and stuffs, well, that's just the way it is. We have to take everything into consideration.
This reminds me, have, have any of you ever read Community and Consequences? I bet you have seen it. Well, I have one copy, but I, I had six copies and I gave a couple to the town hall and I don't know if they threw them out or if they might still be on file over there. And I also gave one to the library. I don't know if they appreciated what, but it's really interesting because that was. Oh, maybe two thousand ten or.
Little bit earlier than that.
Earlier than that. And one of the authors. Gave, shipped me a box of six books because I was on the agriculture and environment committee. And Lorraine Merrill was commissioner of agriculture at the time and she's one of the authors. It wasn't she who sent me the books, it was a fellow, I can't think of his name, French or. French net or something like that, Francizi, French. And anyway, it's an interesting read and it talks about the very thing we're talking, when you say, oh, all these kids are coming into school. It outlines how people in New England villages are saying that and that's why we have big lots and no room for anybody to build. You can't build on the corner of my lot and, you know, and that's why there's a lot of talk about how can we change that attitude?
Well, but my point on the catch twenty-two. Is that, okay, there is a, a clamoring for housing. For people to work in industry or businesses. Well, where can we build the businesses if we're just taking twenty-six acres out of the industrial park? Oh, I know. There's some quiet negotiations going on about possibly recouping some of that. In another area, but if we continue to do this or if the zoning board continues to do that. Where are the people going to work that are coming in? So, well, okay, someone said, well, we can work at home. Well, that's not really. Industry, that's a job.
But that's different, yeah.
No, and the, the best thing we can do for that and the planning board. No, and the the best thing we can do for that and the planning board is the ones are the ones responsible for that is to. To make it not necessarily super easy, but just to make it easier for businesses to set up and something, you know. Within our regulations and all that stuff, but not make them jump through all the hoops that some of these other thoroughly keen or something like that makes them jump through. And, you know, make it end zone areas where they can put up, but. We, the infrastructure is there on a couple ends of town, right? We have the three phase power this end of town, we have three phase power that end of town over there, and that's what they need that. They don't necessarily need the sewer, but they do need the water for sprinklers. So we have water here and water over there.
Or they have to draw a well in to get their sprinkler system and stuff like that.
Yeah, but they'll go somewhere else if they have to do that, it's too big of an expense, but the planning board, yeah, with. With the way we we run it and the way we treat businesses and applicants and stuff in here, we have the power to attract them here if they want to come here, if they will come. And, yeah, go ahead.
So the planning board does have the authority to propose a zoning ordinance change to the voters.
Yeah, yeah.
Just and then there's a law article with the, so in a sense, what you suggested is within.
It's our duty today. That's one of the planning board's duties is to propose changes going by master plan course, but to.
We did trouble with this last year.
I was just trying to confirm with Richard that either what you were saying could be done, it takes a long process to be done.
But we have to watch out for spot zoning, you know, you can't zone a property for this and that. You have to do a chunk of land.
We could get approval from the other two budding lots to this project. To change that zoning.
Well, we don't, we don't need approval from the lots or any of that type of stuff. The planning board can propose a zoning change and the voters just vote on it. Regardless of whether the two are buttering lots.
Consent perhaps of the others.
Well, it's it's nice to get the consent. It's it's nice to bring him into the board, say, look, this is what we're gonna do, you know, we want to rezone your property, this or that, what do you think about it and stuff? Yeah, we don't really want to spring it on them.
Every day is the guy who's interfaced with every business that's come in town in the last eight years. The the challenges that that they face in a lot of zoning, almost all of the zoning has absolutely no ability to fix. And then we do have water, we don't have enough water that can go straight to a sprinkler system. Everybody has to put in additional pumps and additional systems or more. Um, the cost of construction in Chester County for commercial construction, the moment you build a brand new. Commercial structure in Chester County, it's immediately worth half what you paid for it. Naantec wanted that, and they're able to build twice, able to buy twice the building for half the money in North Carolina, so they did. It was really that simple. We've got a, we've got a, we've got a, we've got a company over on Route ten that wants to expand. They know what they're gonna have to do to make use of that water over there, and that's gonna be more systems and stuff. They don't want to do it, and they're trying to figure out another way, and I don't, you know, that's gonna be up to to a fire protection engineer. But I know what Matt was had to do with full throttle, make that work, and there was a lot of systems, and there was a lot of going around, and a lot of engineering to finally make that thing fly. And it's just, you know, I mean, so, you know, there there's a lot of stuff that's basically gotta be figured out and dealt with in a way. We've talked about fire, uh, we've talked to the um. Selectmen extensively, this is something playing could 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 it could help us push push line, it's fire pumps, fire pumps are cheap compared to. Digging up roads and running out and running lines and all the rest of this stuff. But, you know, we all have these conversations and sort of some of my vacuums and things like that, because they're all always supposed to be talked about in this this meeting, that meeting, this group and that group. So EDAC and the rest of S Y C, and I went to EDAC the other day, we really wanted them to start paying attention to what planning does. And put in their two cents on what planning does, but they think we help, this is what might, and and, you know. Be involved in that and that rulemaking process and then try to get everybody kind of in there, because I think we all agree what we want to see. And 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 once that happens, the the solutions will probably come a lot easier as well.
Going off of that, um, we should, suggestion. Get together the zoning board soon. Yeah, we have a discussion.
That that should be moved between them, but also bring in the conservation. Let him let him finish his point.
Yeah, I'm just saying, because we seem to have. Two entities that are not really communicating with each other, and. I think it would be beneficial to all. If we, you know, just sat down and talked, you know, perhaps just going through the master plan and what we, you know, what we see. And what they see. Can we get some some things moving in the in the right direction to help the town?
And.
Way out in the weeds.
No, no, we should meet with all the boards, you know, at least yearly. We haven't done it, but we had, in the past, we used to do that, but again, um. Like Beverly was saying, they're they're for relief. The ZVA for for relief for a property owner, something that wants to do something or wants to do something with their land that isn't allowed. Um, not necessarily having to do much with with the planning board's purview of the zoning and following the ordinance and those types of things. And there are joint meetings we have had with the zoning board adjustment when someone needed a variance or a special exception and the planning board was involved with that. And we had joint meetings in the past doing that type of stuff. That is when it's good to get together, but. Their types of things has to do with, again, going against what the zoning is in there rather than. Uh, following the zoning like we do. But we, if we have, go ahead.
You know, it might be worthwhile if there the New Hampshire Municipal Association puts on webinar, I was in a webinar. All day this morning from nine to one on the right to right to no law. They have others, other webinars on ZVA processing, on planning board deliberations, etc. You might want to check out their website and see if there's anything uh coming up that would be of interest to you, because then you have the opportunity to ask those kinds of questions to the. Lawyers who understand the ordinances from the RSA point of view, what are the state rules, what are the state laws? That impact on each of each community and their own particular zoning ordinances. It's very, very helpful.
That is an excellent idea. I've been to some of those seminars and they are really good. They, you know, you can quiz the attorneys without having to pay for it, so to speak, you know, you're there, but.
They have, they have videos that are available. Every time they do a conference, they get one thirty thirty.
Oh.
They they'll they'll videotape, yeah, and then you can watch it if you leisure, so you can probably send them that link if you want to look.
The the webinars, you can actually ask questions.
Right, right. They're better.
And they are very good about responding to everything that you ask, whoever is asking it online.
There's a two-part webinar coming up, the first part is this Saturday and the second part is May seventh, so I can dig through that and forward it to the. If anyone's interested in participating. Excellent.
Because I've been to a lot of them in the past, so they aren't actually sending them in. I've got a couple with Michael over here.
It's been a long time since I've been to one of them. I'm not in one place too long, so I can't really do that type of stuff, but. I meant, does does everybody have a copy of the RSA? This is a like eighty ninety eight ninety nine one. This is my one from way back then, but it's still good to reference it, you know, but. Um, does anyone have, or anyone have a copy? You don't have a copy, I don't know if any of you guys have a copy, but.
I get the criminal call, but I don't have it.
Is that the same, that the RSA's?
This is eighteen nineteen.
Not a year.
Good year. It's the New Hampshire Planning and Land Use Regulation one. Okay, yeah, that's good. You don't have one, we, the planning board should get one or. Yeah, bring them in and just give them to the members. You should just just have it for keeps, you know, right? Just keep it.
Okay.
Do you have one, Jane?
No, I do not.
And Jane doesn't have one either, so, yeah, if you have.
I don't know if I have.
Yeah, right.
I know I have at least.
I I got this a long time ago from, uh, it was when Ginny, I think Ginny was hunting for it, I might have gotten it for her, but, um.
It can be ordered, but new ones cost dollars, and I'm not sure how we can do that.
Uh, we we have a budget, planning board has a budget, so, yeah, we can, we can get those and we should get those for all the planning.
We'll see how many I have that are not too.
See how many you have, and then I have, well, no, I could use a new one, congratulations, this is from nineteen ninety nine, so I could use a new one.
I know, Jessica gets their planning board, they have ZVA brand new ones every year.
Yeah.
And they're a small town, they don't have a lot of money.
Yeah, so, so let's do that.
But the thing about the in in person conferences, they have back, they always pay for you to go, plus they pay you mileage.
Yeah. But the planning board pays you mileage? You're talking about the town, no kidding, really? Well, let's talk about the, since we just had a plat there that we. We approved with conditions and the conditional approval and approval with conditions. So that one tonight, we had. A ton of administrative ones that would be administrative, like the intent to cut one, that's administrative, it has nothing to do with us, that comes from the town. So the FAA permit administrative, because they wouldn't even look at it until after they got their approval. And let's see, the Route thirty two driveway permit, that's administrative, that's from the state of New Hampshire. And so we're just search from it, that one's from the state of New Hampshire too, which is administrative, we have no power over that, and the wetlands one, we have no power over. That's another administrative one. Uh, alteration of terrain, that's administrative as well, since we have no power over that. So all of those conditions are the conditional approvals that Beverly was trying to tell us is what it meant was that. They can, when, once they get those permits and stuff, if that's all that was on that plat tonight, once they got those permits, it would be finalized without any other hearing at all in front of the planning board. So we have the other two permits, I mean, conditions, one of them was. They needed to give us the actual drawing of the building that's gonna be in the industrial one, they had just a generic one there, so that's a condition, but it's not a conditional. Because they'll have to come back for a compliance hearing in front of us to let us see that that actually is a building they're putting on. And and also the uh, the school bus stop, they didn't put that on the plat, so any, even even where a sign is going or any of that type of stuff. If it's not on the plat and we put it as a condition, we should have them come back.
Because we have to judge according to the memorandum, uh, we have to judge if it's meets the R, if it's adequate.
Me too, I'm conditioned.
Oh, yeah, if it if it meant.
If it's if it's adequate, yeah.
If it's for, it meets the condition that we went to them, yes, and it's and it's on the plat. Then they have to do it where it's on the plat and what is otherwise they're in here for modification.
And when when Mike goes to inspect them and stuff, he got the plat, he could see if they did it, they do it correctly.
Yeah, and if you don't, and they put something up there like a sign or something. Neon sign or whatever it was that you didn't discuss, say there was just an approximate location, the sign goes here, whatever. And we don't put it on the plat where it is, they can put it pretty much where they want it. And say that, well, you know, this said approximate on the plan, you know, and you guys approved it, so there it is right there. You know, they can go to court with it and win with that, something like that. So all the stuff that we. That we want on the plan, we should have on the plan and we should make them come in for a hearing. We haven't been doing that, any compliance hearings. We had done a few in the past, but not too many, but.
So that's a, that's an approval with conditions.
That's it, yeah, that's a, right. One's a conditional approval, the other one's approval with. Yeah, so that's what was giving us trouble there, and so that's how we. It's supposed to be separated, so that's probably from this point on, that's how we should do it. We should bring them back in for another compliance hearing. Make your job easier, do, Mike.
And I was grateful for the assistance.
Okay.
He doesn't want to have to read our minds, so we met, Diva.
So let's see, anything else that we want to discuss about our site plan review regulations or RSA?
That struck me, and I don't know how much we want to get into it, but they did a financial impact statement on this project.
They did, did you read that? Wasn't it good? Yeah, that was a good, yeah.
We may be in our regulation somewhere, a project of this size, we should ask for that.
Um, we probably shouldn't confine ourselves to a project of a certain size, because the planning board has the authority, so they come in, the planning board has the authority, say, well, we would like a financial statement. Prepared and and send them out to do it, rather than con- confining to a certain size project. They'd say, well, we aren't that big, you know, we aren't gonna give you one or whatever, we should keep those things in general. But, um, we don't have to specifically state all those things in the site plan regulations, we can. Just so that aware, that they're aware of what we can ask them for. But it doesn't mean that if one of those isn't in our site plan review review regulations that we cannot ask them for it. We can still ask them to do it if the planning board feels that they need that information. They have pretty broad powers to do that. Any types of those professional things and have the applicant pay for it as well.
Yeah, that's very helpful for me in a project that large, when you're gonna have children moving in. Okay, are we gonna be actually spending more for the kids to get a tax return? Not that that's the deciding factor, but it should be.
And in something like that or any of the professional, um. I guess, studies that that they do, if the planning board feels that they missed the mark or that they're padding the books a little bit or whatever, we can have our own person do it. Another one and still charge them for it too. So.
Did I ask if anyone out there is gonna do this in stages or was, I think you you had asked that question as a matter of fact. If they were going to do stages or if they're gonna do a complete bill?
Yep, and there were, more or less, it's gonna be a complete bill. I think I asked them about the infrastructure in there, the roads and that type of stuff, and how they're gonna do that. And they said that, well, yes, all that was gonna be put in first before the buildings went up, but the buildings were gonna go up one, two and three, so. Sometimes there are phases in these projects around town, I can't think of one off the top of my head, but. We've had them that they've been phase one, two and three, overspread out over several years.
Was there a couple of the um, storage units or like that that did it in stages?
It might be, might be.
But it's presented that way, but that's the way they got done anyway.
That's right, yeah, sometimes that happens.
Yeah, you you play, you know, to drive both went through a couple of iterations where.
Yeah. It's expensive, you know, it's a big expense.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, and a lot of times, this is what I see planning boards do, and I go back and forth on how I feel about it, because. A lot of places will force you to put, you know, all the roads, all the infrastructure, and everything's done. And, um, I mean, I think it's a tremendous amount of money, and that's why a lot of times you end up seeing applicant number one go out. And it gets built by applicant number two or even three, because they just use up their money on all that infrastructure. They all think they can do it and. And, you know, and no extent change, it takes, you know, look, in four months, you know, in August, we could be sitting here, who knows what it's gonna be like, you know?
Yeah. And we require them to be bonded to, you know, bond for those things, which.
I think that's, that's.
It's a better way to do it, yeah.
Best way to go, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, of course, especially if we're gonna, we're taking it over at some point, that's.
Yeah.
That's especially.
Those one that in stages at the end of Matthews Road, it's in Key, but there's one house there.
Oh, yeah.
The kids have their basketball hoop way up the other end of the street, because there's nobody, nobody else ever built.
Well, is there anything else as far as other businesses may be required?
One thing, um, previously you had suggested that COMCOM put together comments on groundwater protection. Guidance, regulations for site plan.
Oh, yeah, we, we were gonna discuss it, yeah, you know, if they put something together like that, they were also supposed to just put something about. The institution of, what was it? Was it the master had to do with master planned, did it?
Oh, yeah.
Master plan, they haven't done that or have done that, you know, as far as.
They haven't had another meeting yet.
Haven't done that.
They have a meeting next week, so I just want to follow up.
What about the groundwater, they.
Again, they haven't had another meeting yet.
Because that that part of the stuff right there should go in our site plan review regulations, because the the state gives us the authority to to. Decide issues like that in our site plans too, instead of an entire ordinance, because we've been through the ordinance thing before and and I've been against it, you've been for it. And all those types of things, but a lot of those things that are in those groundwater protection zones and things like that are things we're already doing in our current zoning. And my objection against it always has been that instead of having layer upon layer upon layer of zoning in there. It gets too repetitive, but if we want to protect some of those areas in town, you know, the well-headed areas maybe over here, anywhere it is, actually the whole town, I guess, and I prefer. Put it in a site plan, go ahead, Mike.
One of the things that certainly I also talked about is especially these larger projects. You kind of only need once a month, and that's it, once a month. And theoretically, a site plan could come in, meet the deadline. And maybe even get heard without they're even having an opportunity for input. So we thought that it may prove us to make a little more sense is especially as larger projects. If we gave them more front-end time to get in front of the planning board, to give them an opportunity to actually take a look at them.
Well, we, yeah, I wasn't aware of that, that that could happen, but, yeah, definitely, if we haven't. Well, we, yeah, I wasn't aware that 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 could happen, but, yeah, definitely, if we haven't heard from the COMCOM that we should, because we used to do this before anyways, as as a matter of routine, that we would accept the application as complete or not complete at one meeting and not not have a public hearing until the next meeting, next two weeks. So, yeah, if they haven't had a chance to see it, then that's what should happen. We can still accept the application, start the timetable, but, yeah, we should have the public hearing after that, after they see it. But we we'd need to know if they saw it or not.
Right, right, well, and and, you know, I knew you, I knew it wasn't an intentional anything, but I know kind of comes more than once kind of complained that, you know, we never really got a chance to look at it.
Well, no, that's important. That's an important part of what the planning board's supposed to look at, is what the feedback from those other.
Okay, cool, appreciate that.
So, yeah, if we can have that on, just as a little footnote on the agenda or something, whether they actually had a chance to look at it. Then we can, we'd know what to do with that meeting.
The Conservation Commission, with Jane, Jane can speak to this, had a a significant impact on a proposed development off of Temple Hill, I believe, which is called Canyon Spring.
Oh, that was my day. I was on the CONSCOM then.
Yes, and and my answer was, the the DES asked for comments to the application. And the conservation, I was on it at the time, the Conservation Commission had a special series of meetings with engineers, because we're all late people and don't know, switch cases all over, and went through the whole plan detailed and made a bunch of comments about, we had questions about this, questions about that, just just in the minutes. Submitted those minutes from that special meeting to the DES. DES came back to the developer with something like eight pages, a single space of requirements that they had to fulfill in order to, because they obviously listened to what the Conservation Commission had to say.
Yeah.
And and none of us were opposed to development. We're just opposed to irresponsible development. Right, we want to see if that mountain is gonna be protected and the flow of stormwater is not gonna be mitigated appropriately, then the developer needs to do something about it. Anyway, it was such an impact that he never built there.
No, still it has.
Because he hasn't fulfilled the the requirements that DES provided to him from the commentary from the Conservation Commission, so it can be a very critical part of the.
And it is, the larger projects for sure, it is, really is, and the planning board does need to see them.
Too, I believe, wasn't it? Many, many houses.
It was large.
Yeah.
For there. And it could affect Swansea Lake and a lot of area around there. The DES really held held them up and they never did submit, I think, all of the things they needed to to the. Had.
It's significantly deficient, I mean, severely deficient.
It was a deficient plan.
It was just very deficient.
Yeah, it was a deficient plan to begin with, yes.
Yeah.
But it's been sold, and that's been that.
Very daring, but it might come back.
Never know.
Well, you never know.
Do we have anything on the agenda for the next meeting yet?
We have a multi-tenant application.
Avenue with those guys, they're on.
Oh, right, Avenue's on. Sorry, they're not here, they're other.
Right, they're just, right, they aren't a public.
Are they requesting a public hearing? Do they have to?
No, it was, it was a public hearing because uh they wanted a modification of the site plan. We can't really discuss this too much, because it's coming up in the next meeting. So, but as it turns out, I don't know, we're we're just gonna do it as a discussion or as a regular agenda item is what we're gonna do.
Is that, what what's that involve? Changing the roof lines?
Well, that's that's what his intent is to do. He had to change something like that there, because it's too expensive for him to do it. So he's gonna present his case to us. Next meeting. He was in here doing homework to see how this guy was.
He was taking lessons.
Did you notice that I included the section from the RSA?
I did, that was a good footnote you put in there, yeah.
Because he was specifically referring to that, and I knew there was something about the language he was using that had to be based on law.
We can't, can't discuss it.
But you you now have the right.
And and we will have, Sarah's gonna give us all the actual RSA in our packet when it comes, and we'll be able to read the whole RSA and be familiar with it, so. Good for the next meeting. Anything else in uh further discussion, other business, any of that type of stuff?
Or did you do minutes?
I didn't do the minutes, did I? No, that's right, I didn't, but but there was nothing on the agenda that would have required it, luckily for me.
But we should do minutes.
So, yeah, um, yes, we did not do that, so I'm glad that we have Beverly here to remind us of this thing. So we have the approval, yeah, we have the approval for April fourteenth, the minutes of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do we have any any changes or nations operations? No, then we need a motion to accept them as presented. Motion by Jane to accept the minutes of April fourteenth as presented.
I don't know, can I do that? I recuse myself.
Well, that's only for that one.
But it said that, it said I did.
But you were still at the meeting.
Yeah, I was here.
So you know what was said, so, and that was seconded by Michael York. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. I'm all opposed, and great. We got those minutes.
They have, uh, Sherry Domina did come to the public hearing last time, but she didn't say anything, but I'm sure she took it all in.
Who was that for?
Sherry Domina, she's chair of the Conservation Commission now, while they stepped down, and he's an alternate.
Oh, he is?
And we have a number of new members.
Really?
Yeah, um, Bud Windsor. You know Bud?
From a little by sight, I don't, I I recognize the name, but I don't know who it is, probably when I saw it.
He used to be head of grounds maintenance of the King's State College. He knows a lot about conservation and plants and how things work.
If we have this meeting with the ZVA, would it be advantageous for us to have a COMCOM committee?
We need an agenda, what we want to discuss with, you know, if we, before we have a meeting, unless it's a specific item that's coming for both boards, for whatever reason it is, we need some sort of an agenda just that we want to talk to those guys about.
Another man from COMCOM was present last month, last meeting too. I can't think of his name. Jay?
Jay, he's James, pretty good for Jay.
And um, he's he's new on the board.
Cassie Eaton. Cassie Eaton.
Cassie Eaton, right. Cassie, young woman.
I just like to add something that I learned today at the seminar, I mean, at the webinar about um extensions versus recusing oneself. Um, the the attorney suggests that you very rarely use an extension. Should really not, because if you have a chance to read the minutes, uh, which everybody does, I'm sure, in the packet, um, then you should be voting. You are a public servant, but this is what they, this is how they phrase it. Uh, you you volunteer to participate, participate, participation mean voting one way or the other.
But but even if the person was not attending that meeting, we'll say Brandon isn't at the meeting here.
Even the person was not.
How could, how could they vote that the meeting, that the minutes were correct if they were not there to witness them? But that is, that is what they meant though, right? If the person did not attend the meeting?
Yes.
They'd still vote on.
Yes.
Really?
Um, and then what's recusing oneself is, we have, everybody who knows how to do that, that's that's when you have a conflict of interest. But extensions, they said, should very, very rarely be used.
Really? That's interesting. You know, I would have thought it the other way around, that you couldn't vote on something you weren't witnessing.
I wouldn't think so either. I thought you were gonna say, um if the discussion of a project went on and on and on, and there were pros and cons, and things didn't fall into place really, but out of five people, four voted yes. And you still weren't satisfied with what you had heard, you'd like to have heard and go longer, and you didn't feel you could honestly vote. But you can't do that either, because I've read all that stuff. You just have to say no and.
If if you're there, you should vote. Yeah, I would definitely say, if you're attending, whether it's a hard vote or whatever, you gotta. Well, that too, yeah. Yeah, but that was their recommendation. Interesting recommendation, yeah, just don't, I don't get that one.
Yeah.
It's their opinion too, you know? So. A motion for a Richard, is there a second? Seconded by Michael Day. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. I'm all opposed, we are officially. Richard made the motion and.